I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Here.
Commissioner Sfarza.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Here.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Here.
Uh, comment cards?
Uh, one comment card, um, it's regarding, um, murals, uh, so I think that would be related to item number two.
Two?
Uh, so during the public hearing, uh, Mr. McCown?
Alright.
Yes?
Yes.
If you would come up during that item during the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. If you would come up during the public hearing, okay.
Okay, uh, need a motion to approve minutes of, uh, last month?
I make a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sfarza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is, uh, item number two, zoning ordinance text amendment number seventeen. Here's staff report, this is, uh, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, this item was continued from the February eleventh Planning Commission meeting, and this is a request to establish regulation, regulations for art in public places on private property citywide, and management analyst Danny Elizara Russ will go over the request for you.
Thank you, John. So, good evening, Chair and Commissioners, uh, I will be presenting to you ZODA seventeen, Art in Public Places. As public art becomes more and more popular throughout the nation, we believe that it is necessary to establish a set of regulations for art that is publicly visible and accessible on private property. For some background, on June eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, City Council directed to re, uh, research public art mural regulations. On November fifth, uh, twenty nineteen, staff presented a preliminary proposal expanding on public art regulations. Since then, staff and our city attorney have been working on clarifying the definition of what is public art and art in public places. Here we see the controversial Emoji House in Manhattan Beach, uh, this is one of the reasons why developing art regulations on private property are so important. The proposed ordinance would define what artwork is. There's a distinction between art in public places and public art. Art in public places is artwork that is commissioned on private property, but is, is accessible to, uh, the public. Uh, public artwork in, public artwork is artwork that is in the city's right-of-way, that is owned and maintained by the city. Here are some examples, uh, to my left, uh, there's an art mural on private property, and then to your right, there is a brass statue that is, or brass, um, sculpture or statue that is at Spanney Park. In the proposed ordinance, we have distinguished the difference between permanent artwork, temporary artwork, and place-making, as well as specific guidelines for murals. Uh, here we see a few examples of permanent artwork. Um, in the photo, there's permanent artwork on private property that's actually in town. There's a definition of temporary artwork, uh, this is modernizing our municipal code for more current forms of artwork. Here we see an example of, uh, grand performances in downtown arts, in the downtown arts district. Grand performances is a collaboration of private property owners and the city of Los Angeles to introduce the community to talented local and international artists from different cultural, uh, generational, and socioeconomic groups. The efforts are to create an inclusive environment that promotes cultural exchange and community building. In addition to the definition, uh, ZODA seventeen will establish guidelines for what type of artwork is allowed on publicly accessible private property. Some of the guidelines include that artwork shall be displayed in an area that is open and freely accessible to the public at least ten hours each day. The artwork shall be related in terms of scale, material, form, and content, uh, to immediate and adjacent buildings and landscaping, landscaping to complement the site and surrounding environment. The artwork shall be designed and constructed by a person experienced in the production of such artwork and recognized by critics and artist peers as one who produces works of art. We also included, um, included, uh, what shall not be considered, uh, works of art, uh, some of these include the following. For the prop, uh, processing of installa, ins, ins, installing publicly accessible artwork, the planning department will receive the art in public places application. The development review board will review and approve all applications. Applicants have the option to appeal, uh, the development review board's decision to City Council. Uh, so with that, we recommend resolution two zero point zero one zero, which will be recommending City Council to adopt ordinance for zoning ordinance text amendment number seventeen. Uh, we hope that establishing public art regulations will encourage public art in the city of Paramount for years to come. And I also want, uh, to give a thanks to John Kavanaugh for assisting us with this ordinance. Uh, art can be very, uh, subjective, and John helped us develop an ordinance that allows artists and property owners to be creative, but at the same time, uh, we keep the city of Paramount beautiful. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of, uh, staff? We did have one comment card, correct?
We do.
Okay, we will have an open public hearing, if anyone in favor, please come up and state your name.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Mike McCown.
Uh, could you turn the mic on?
On.
Right there, thank you.
My name is Mike McCown, and, um, I've been a longtime Paramount resident, I've actually been here for sixty years. Um, I, I work for the Paramount Care Foundation, I'm also the co-chairman of the Paramount Heritage Parade Committee. And, um, I'm very strongly in favor of this, this, this ordinance, I think art is long overdue in the city. I also do believe we do need a city arts commission, but that will have to come at some future time. But for right now, one of the things that I'm thinking about is I'm, I think about murals in the city. Um, in the past, we have, I, I also am the coordinator for pitch in Paramount, and we have often suggested, you, we can paint a mural. Well, I actually had a city employee tell me, we don't want murals in our city. That was, that was several years ago, but, uh, obviously has changed, and I'm very glad about that. But let me say one thing here about, uh, murals in particular, if you travel through California, you'll find that many cities across the state use murals as a form of, of economic incentive for business districts in particular. You can go to Twenty-Nine Palms, you go to Exeter, California, uh, one of my favorite states, Lompoc, and you see where they've got murals, not one, or two, or three, but two and three dozen murals, mostly in the central part of the city. And most of them depict, uh, aspects of that city's history. Now, if I look on the wall here, I see these buildings here, and we have the city hall, which is still standing. Uh, today happens to be the eighty-seventh anniversary of the Long Beach earthquake, Lincoln School, my alma mater is gone because of that earthquake. But we also see buildings here in the second and third picture, or second picture right here, of a row of buildings built in nineteen twenties, and in the case of the First State Bank Building, and previously known as the Heinz National Bank Building, was built around nineteen ten, nineteen twelve. Uh, they were demolished with redevelopment. We've allowed a lot of buildings to be destroyed in the city, a lot of our character has disappeared with it. Our business district was taken out in nineteen eighty-four, replaced with a shopping center, it's a beautiful shopping center, but says nothing about who we are as Paramount. Now, at some point, we're going to have a light rail, a station up the street at Rosecrans and Paramount Boulevard. And one of the things that we really need to do is we need to encourage people to get off that train and have an incentive to walk down Paramount Boulevard, or walk up Paramount Boulevard, or go east and west on Rosecrans. And one way we can do that is by having murals that reflect our history, our culture, and the people that live in the city. And I think we could be known as a city of murals. They need to be done well, they need to be untastefully, they, for the most part, they should be done professionally. But if you look, if you can Google Twenty-Nine Palms, Twenty-Nine Palms murals, just see what they've done in that city. It's revived their downtown. You can do the same thing with Exeter, Exeter was a dying city, a very economically stressed city. Look at what they've done in their downtown. People actually come to those cities specifically to see the murals. And I think we really need a comprehensive mural program. The, the photo right up there is a prime example, that is the site of the, of the Haymarket, and anything less than putting a rendition of the Haymarket in its heyday would seem to be a crime to me. That solid wall there needs something like that. And I think just simply putting up there to say, we've got some art up there and we're, we're done, that's just not what we need. We need something comprehensive, we need a, a focus on what kind of murals we want in Paramount, and in particular, we want to be able to, um, express ourselves as a city. We have a very rich cultural history, a rich political and social history, and it's time that we convey that to our visitors, and most importantly, to our residents, because they, they know the stories, they just don't see any evidence of it. And that's it, thank you.
Any other one, anyone else would like to speak on this subject? You come up and state your name, please? That's okay, you can come up.
I didn't prepare anything, but Mike has inspired me, um, so we've been working together in the Heritage Parade, and I just wanted to reiterate that.
Could you state your name again for us?
I'm sorry, uh, my name's Kristy Brown.
Okay.
And, uh, I just think that, um, having a mural, um, another thing that it does is that it encourages conversation with people in the city. And what I have realized with, um, being part, a new member, a new resident in the city, and a member of the Heritage Parade, is that people love this city, and it would be so wonderful for everybody to talk with each other and exchange, um, you know, tidbits about this, the history of the city. And I think it would be fabulous to add some character to this place, because what I have realized coming down from Northern California, a beautiful place, to Southern California, so many places, so many cities in this area are so dirty, and they're ugly. And Paramount is clean, and that's one of the wonderful things about our city. But it does lack character, in my opinion, and I think it would be wonderful to, uh, create some beauty, some interest, create some conversations, uh, so I just want to add my two cents, so.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this subject? Do I hear a motion, anyone against this? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sfarza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes, do I hear a motion on this?
I'd like to, is it possible still to add my comments?
Sure.
I'd like to make a recommendation, actually, to push this item onto either next month or a future month. I think the language is pretty restrictive and bureaucratic for, um, this agenda item at this point, and I'll give you a few examples. Some of the things that stood out to me, and I know that the city is definitely intent on encouraging public art, and I definitely commend that effort, however, I don't think that the language, as it currently, uh, sits right now, reflects that. Um, so there's a very strong emphasis about the city having broad authority when it's, um, under its general police powers. The, there's text that talks about the authority to, to adopt and enforce zoning regulations as an exercise of the city's police power. Also, uh, it mentions that this is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan adopted in two thousand and seven. We are in the process still of revisiting the general plan, either later this year or next year, I believe. Um, so this feels kind of rushed, I think it's been enough time since the last general plan to feel that we necessarily have to pass this tonight as it sits. Um, there's also language that strikes me as being very restrictive in the sense that it, it mentions things like the artwork has to be designed and constructed by an artist or otherwise person experienced in the production of such artwork and recognized by critics, um, and by his or her peers as one who produces works of art. If the city is trying to encourage public art, that language feels extremely restrictive and doesn't really strike me as language that is encouraging community-based projects, um, so that was troublesome. Um, furthermore, the artwork has to be insured, there has to be maintenance plans that are submitted. Um, temporary art installations, um, are required to be comprehensively documented by recordings, essays, uh, or a combination of media, and so on and so forth. So there are several sticking points, for lack of a better word, that I feel, um, should be thought more carefully, thought out more carefully, and I definitely would recommend that we move this item to either next month or a future month and in the near future, uh, to sort out some of the language that seems extremely restrictive and contradictory to what the city's stated objective is, which is to encourage public art.
I have questions of staff and maybe the city attorney, who was helpful in writing this, you have any comments on those?
Well, as far as the, um, the comment regarding the, the criteria or the, the, the eligibility of the artist doing the art, that's more something that is, is a, a policy question for you. With respect to insurance and all that, I, I wouldn't recommend changing that at all, because what we don't want, and I've seen many cities do this, where there's art in public places, and the city then becomes responsible for maintaining it, the artist becomes AWOL, don't know where they are, you can't replace it, and it ends up being very, very difficult. We've had, we have situations right now where we, we're very fortunate to know where the artist is, where we've had to have maintenance and repairs, and, um, I, I, my recommendation, I wouldn't change those, that, that, not that restriction, but that criteria. But as far as who the artist is and how they qualify, that's more of a policy question that you can have, that maybe, uh, the staff, um, can, can talk about more. I, I think what it is, is that, from what I'm, my discussions with the staff on, is that they want to encourage the art, but at the same time, obviously, they don't want to have, you know, pictures where you have, like, uh, the Moki or whatever, or artists just do, you know, put something together or splash something together, and then say it's representative of city of Paramount, so I think there's some thought. That is why I think one of the speakers came up too, a lot of cities do have, um, art commissions, where they, where they're actually vet the artist and the type of art. Um, so it's not uncommon for, for that type of criteria to be applied as far as the art is. But that's not necessarily a legal question, that's more of a policy question, that's just my experience in dealing with these type of ordinances.
Thank you.
If I can add a couple comments to that, so I definitely appreciate, I think those are very legitimate concerns. There's, there's text here that talks about, you know, trying to prohibit expressions of obvious bad taste, obscenity, indecency, hate speech. Obviously, we don't want that, so, um, I just think there's a much clearer way to protect against that kind of art and not have to be so restrictive in so many other ways. So perhaps, uh, toning down some of these restrictions, but still addressing, uh, I can appreciate the insurance concerns and, um, you know, being able to stay in contact with the artist and them going AWOL, perhaps. Uh, there are some legitimate concerns here, but I think we don't have to rush this. I think we have time to talk this through a little bit more and make it a real inclusive, comprehensive, uh, ordinance going forward.
Any other comments from anybody else up here? So your recommendation is to postpone it at least one month?
At least one month.
My, my concern is, the city would like, they started this almost a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
They went to staff and said, we want something, and then they did a proposal near the end of last year, and now they're looking for something to come through from us. Now, I understand your concerns about that, if you'd like to meet with staff and maybe hash these things out with them, I have no problem with that, but I would like to just postpone it a month, if that's okay.
Sure, well, if.
That way you give, you get a month to get your concerns into them, and then you guys can rehash things, and then maybe come up with some different wording.
Present it before the commission again?
Yeah, bring it before the commission again.
I think that'd be great.
Is that okay with, with staff? Okay, so, do I hear a motion to postpone this ordinance until, uh, next month, the second Tuesday?
I make a motion that we postpone the plant, um, the adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC two zero zero one oh for one month until April twenty twenty. I won't be here, but, I'll be on vacation, but you guys will be here.
Second that.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sfarza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, conditional use permit number seven twenty-one, extension. Staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, um, I'll be going through this item with you.
Finish the voting on that? Okay, we got, moved on.
The lights. Okay, so, uh, this item is a request for a two-year extension for conditional use permit number seven twenty-one to allow for the operation of a materials recovery facility. The site is located at one four zero zero one Garfield Avenue in the heavy manufacturing zone. The recycling facility would receive, process, and transfer source-separated recyclables, residential curbside recyclables, and municipal solid waste. This item was originally approved in two thousand and fifteen, and the applicant had three years to get the facility up and operating. Due to the lengthy permit process with Los Angeles County and the state, the applicant was unable to meet the three-year deadline. In April of two thousand and eighteen, the applicant received a two, two-year extension. However, due to a slowdown in countries accepting recyclables, the applicant is asking for another two-year extension. So the Royal Recycling and Transfer Facility, our RRT, site contains seven point three two acres, and there are, uh, building square footage of one hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred square feet. The RRT project includes construction of a thirty-nine thousand five hundred, thirty-nine thousand five hundred square-foot metal building and rehabilitation of the existing structures, and we'll talk about that later during the Development Review Board meeting. The western half of Pederson Lane was vacated in two thousand and seventeen, and as Calmet owns property on both sides of Pederson Lane, the street will be incorporated into the RRT facility. The RRT site is surrounded by the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power right-of-way to the north, Pederson Lane to the south, the Southern California Edison easement to the west, and Garfield Avenue to the east. Uses surrounding the site include single-family residential to the north, a mobile home park to the west, and industrial to the south and east. This is the site in, uh, the red outline, Garfield Avenue is to the right of the slide, and Pederson Lane is in the middle. And some pictures of the facility of the site, I'm sorry, too far. So Calmet purchased the site from Royal Truck Body in two thousand and eleven, and is proposing maximum processing capacity of two thousand four hundred and fifty tons per day. While Calmet is requesting a maximum of two thousand four hundred and fifty tons per day, the applicant anticipates that they will only operate at fifty percent of the maximum, or one thousand two hundred and twenty-five tons per day. The RRT facility would be a state-of-the-art recycling facility with all operations taking place indoors. Calmet currently operates the Paramount Resource Recycling Facility across the street at seventy-two thirty Pederson Lane, and this facility is allowed to process one thousand five hundred tons of waste per day. Next on the agenda, the Planning Commission will consider a two-year extension to amended conditional use permit four forty-five, and this is the conditional use permit that approved the Paramount Resource Recycling Facility. And the amendment restricts the tons per day that can be processed to five hundred and seventy tons, and also restricts the type of waste that can be processed. When functional, the RRT facility would receive materials from two AM to ten PM, seven days a week. Recyclable materials would be transferred out twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week. And again, all, all activities would be conducted indoors. The primary function of the RRT facility would be to receive, process, and transfer source-separated recyclables and municipal solid waste. No hazardous materials, liquid waste, or contaminated food waste would be processed at the RRT facility. Southbound trucks would enter the site from Garfield Avenue using a new third traffic lane. Northbound trucks would enter the site from the existing dedicated left-turn lane at Garfield Avenue and Pederson. The eastern half of Pederson Lane would be widened to accommodate three inbound traffic lanes and one outbound lane. Employee parking, truck parking, truck scales, and truck, truck maneuvering areas would be located on the south side of the RRT facility, and queuing would occur onsite. Once onsite, loads will be weighed, and trucks will enter the building to unload. Municipal solid waste would move to source separation lines, and recycled materials would be removed both manually and with automation. Recyclables would be baled to be shipped off-site, and waste that cannot be recycled would be transferred to area landfills. So the key elements of the project include the receiving building, which will be the new building where waste is unloaded and transferred to other sorting areas. The municipal sol, municipal solid waste building will sort recyclables with equipment and also manually. The curbside municipal solid waste building is where recyclables are further sorted. The transfer loadout building is where non-recyclable waste is loaded for transport to landfills. The bale storage building is where recycled materials will be stored for off-site transfer, and as part of this project, the city will receive a host fee. Here's a look at the facility, uh, Garfield's on the right-hand side, running north and south. The new proposed building is in the burgundy color, and then the existing buildings are in various colors. This is a schematic of what the, um, interior would look like with the sorting equipment. And then I'll just go through some pictures of what the various pieces of equipment will look like. An environmental impact report was prepared for this project and was adopted by the Planning Commission in two thousand and fifteen. The environmental impact report determined that the project would not cause impacts that cannot be mitigated. Construction and operational emissions will be, will be below South Coast Air Quality Management District thresholds. Odor control measures will include inward air velocity ventilation, reverse air pressure at all building openings, a filtration system, and odor control misters. This, uh, the RRT facility will not accept hazardous materials. Looking at traffic, operating at the anticipated tons per day of one thousand two hundred and twenty-five tons, there will be a net increase of nine hundred and thirty-five daily trips to the RRT facility. Traffic level of service was examined by the EIR, level of service describes congestion during AM and PM peak periods. Level A represents free-flow traffic conditions, and level F represents oversaturated, saturated conditions. Mitigation measures at the southbound intersection of Garfield and Pederson will include restriping of the southbound Garfield to include a new third traffic lane. With this mitigation measure, the level of service will change from A to B. Mitigation measures at northbound Garfield at Rosecrans will include a dedicated right turn to eastbound Rosecrans. With this mitigation measure, the level of service will remain at D. Mitigation measures at westbound Rosecrans at Garfield will include a dedicated right turn lane onto northbound Garfield. With this mitigation measure, the level of service will remain at D. And mitigation at the seven-ten freeway, northbound off-ramp at Alondra will include a restriped shared left and right turn lane. With this mitigation measure, the level of service will remain at D. There's also a mitigation measure prohibiting truck traffic from traveling north on Garfield from Pederson, with the exception of trash trucks that service those neighborhoods to the north. Mitigation measures to control rodents and insects will include a prohibition of outdoor storage of waste and regular vector control inspections. Mitigation measures for noise will include conducting all activities indoors, and that truck engines be turned off during loading and unloading. truck engines be turned off during loading and unloading. And with that, it's recommended that you adopt Resolution Number PC 016, approving a two-year extension to conditional use permit number 721, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? This is an open public hearing. Anyone in favor, please come up and state your name. Anyone opposed? Or motion to close public hearing?
Sir, there's somebody.
Oh, okay. Please come up and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is George Montoya. Actually, my concern is actually through the extension of this that has been since 2015 to the improved, actually, or making more large, actually, the trash company. And my concern is actually, I'm a neighbor in there, not less than actually 15 feet from the distance. So it's a lot of concerns that I have, and I've been actually exposed since 2015. So I want to know who's going to guarantee us that it's not going to be any problems at all to their community next to, actually, to that place? Because right now, definitely, we have some issues that is not being a concern, but definitely we're concerned when it's going to be more bigger. And it seems like nobody is actually in here. It's going to take actually time to go and check it out more frequently, since I'm just nearby from there. So my point of view is, who is to guarantee that it's not going to be any issues? That we're not going to have no problems? Because we nothing, actually, I don't want to compare it as the virus that we have right now, that I hope that nobody actually take it, but how we can guarantee that?
My question, are you having problems now, sir?
Definitely in the summer. Summer's a lot of flies running, actually, from that section two over here to my area, my house.
And where is your home located, exactly?
It's in 13923 Garfield Avenue.
Okay, so you're just across the street, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else opposed or have concerns?
Anyone else want to speak to that?
Anyone else want to speak to this issue?
I have some comment if I can.
Okay, make a motion to close public hearing, I've heard. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bragoe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde?
Yes. Now, you had some concerns?
Yeah, I think I, just to be brutally honest, I don't think there's anybody in this room who would want a municipal solid waste facility in their neighborhood. I think we can be clear about that. However, we did get a tour of the facility, and I feel that the facility is making every effort to improve their technology and avoid having as many potential nuisances to the surrounding neighborhood. I'm wondering if, so there's 88 cities in LA County, and we happen to be one of the only facility, one of the only cities in the county that has this type of facility. I think there's an opportunity that I'd just like to let out into the air today, not necessarily as a recommendation, but if we are going to be one of the only cities that has a facility like this, I think that there's an opportunity to do something in terms of recycling that could be very special, to be a model to the rest of the county. I lived in the Bay Area for a couple of years, and they quite honestly laugh at Los Angeles' inability to be better at recycling. And I would just like to express this to the owner of the facility as perhaps there being a missed opportunity, and I don't really know what kind of community efforts there have been, I'm sure there have been some, but perhaps there could be a strengthening of the relationship between this facility and the school district, promoting education about recycling, sustainability issues. I think there could be something really special if we are going to have to live with this kind of facility here. And again, I don't by any means mean to offend the owner of the facility, because I do think that they're making every effort to minimize any potential harm. But I did just want to mention that as something that perhaps from a vision standpoint, and just speaking as sort of this broader vision that the city has, that this could be an element that we could also take into account. So I don't know, the owner is here, I don't know if he wants to speak to that. I'd be happy to hear more about it, but just something I wanted to express.
I have an opinion about that.
During the city time, I've seen times where there's been pickups, the city's sponsored,
and it's all done by Calmet. Their trucks come there. If you have oversized waste that you want to get rid of, they're there, and Calmet does it at no cost. They pick it up, there's no cost to the city, there's no cost for the resident of the city of Paramount. You show your ID, and you just drop it off. We're not going to take outside Compton and Downey stuff.
Right.
But for the city of Paramount, and it's done several times a year. So I think there is an effort by the company to be reactive, to help, you know, the residents of Paramount to get their stuff.
Yeah.
Now, you maybe want to promote it a little more through the city and stuff. You have school district, possibly, but I think it's more for the parents to know where they can get rid of this stuff, and there'd be less dumping in alleys and leaving couches and old refrigerators out on the street corners.
Right.
So I think there are plans, you know, but I mean, I think it's advertised pretty well. I mean, it's on the city's webpage, flyers go out. I know, I've seen it in the different papers come to my house. I've lived here for, well, almost 70 years, except for four years in the Air Force, so I've seen it happen.
Yeah.
So, you know, I just, I don't think we can really make that the company isn't doing something. They are.
Oh, I definitely, again, to be clear, I definitely commend the efforts they have made. I mean, I think when I went on the tour, they mentioned it's as simply as just making a phone call, you can get an extra bin delivered to you. So I by no means mean to say that they're doing nothing, or even close to nothing. I just think that there could be opportunities to do more, to be a role model for the rest of the county, to think bigger, and that dialogue should be an ongoing dialogue that should never end. We can always do better, and that's what I'd like to express tonight.
I think that's what they got going with this new facility, is going to be cleaner.
This is probably, this could be a first step.
That's right.
Or an additional step.
Bill Kalpikoff, Joe Mayor of the Calmet Services.
I have to reopen public hearing? Go right ahead, Bill.
Well, I'm just here to say good evening. Yes, sir. Commissioner and the rest of the commissioners on the board. I think, Jaime, some of your thoughts and your ideas are great, and that's what we do. We're here, we're embedded in this community, that's why we're willing to invest $60 million on this project. It's been delayed. You know, we've had permitting processes you have to go through, whether it's the CalRecycle, the LEA, the Health Department, you know, we have the Edison, we have the Department of Water and Power Easement. So I think we passed all those hurdles, and then in the meantime, we had the Great China Sward, which has impacted the recycling markets throughout the nation. And that has put a real damper on our project. From what our original performer that we provided to our banking institutions, we showed, you know, profit from the recyclables. Over the last two years, you know, we went from possibly a million dollars of sales of recycled materials to maybe 100,000. So it flipped the whole thing. Is the market changing? I think so. There's a turnaround, but it kind of set us back a little bit. We're looking for some third-party investors, which I think we have right now, and we're ready to go. So that's why our permit is expiring, our CUP, in April, and that's why we're here to go ahead and get an extension, and we're going to do all these things. I mean, right now, we're involved in the community as far as we are sort reports, which is the outreach for recycling education to public. We do now twice a year the cleanup events at Paramount Park, which has been highly successful. And probably 80% of the material that is delivered by the residents gets recycled that are existing in the facility, whether it's metal, refrigerators, or washers and dryers, or wood products, or what have you. So that's successful, and then you have all the volunteers that are out there that are helping in the community, you know, everyone's getting involved. So you talk about the murals, it's the same type of thing. It's community involvement, and this is what we're about. You know, I said, I've been here for almost all my life, and I love this community, it's a great city, we have good people, good leadership, and you can just see where we're going. And we, you talked about other recycling centers in other cities, there's a lot of them out there. You have Downey, which is a nice community, they have a big, large facility that processes about 2,000 ton a day. Santa Monica, there's one over there. You have Southgate, you have the one in Long Beach, there's two in Santa Fe Springs, Whittier has a number of them. So they're scattered, you need these things, because you don't directly haul to landfill anymore. It has to be processed first, and that's what we're doing. We're putting state-of-the-art processing equipment, which can be your optic sorters, which you kind of did see at the Pointy Hills MRF, but you know, it wasn't operating at that time, where you're going to use less labor doing the sorting, it'll be done mechanically, which makes the efficiencies and the quality of the material much higher. So I think we're on the road, we'll get this started, and state-of-the-art, like John was saying, you did a great presentation on it, John, reverse air, you won't have any odor. I mean, it's something that, it's going to raise the bar. Pointy Hills MRF, they put theirs in 15, 12 years ago, and that's kind of already outdated. So just the equipment keeps raising the bar and the level of equality. Any questions? I'm here.
I have a question after Jaime, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I guess they showed Victor Control is going to be controlling the insects and rodents, but what controls the neighbors' problem with the flies coming around?
I don't, I mean, George mentioned some flies. I mean, I don't know, I don't think they're coming from our facility. I mean, I'm there all the time, I don't see any flies. Summertime, you know, you have a little bit of odor, but it's not a whole lot. I mean, it's because of the residential waste, it sits for a week before it gets picked up. So you have some of that issues, but we get it out. Within 12 hours, it's moving, it's going to the landfill. You know, we have, there's going to be rodent control facility companies, which we have right now, they come weekly, and they check the traps. I mean, it's, and it's enclosed, so it's airtight, so I, I don't see that being a problem whatsoever.
Flies are not an issue at your facility?
I don't see any flies right now, correct. And, you know, you're well, more than welcome to come, and you can see our site. I mean, it's clean, and with the new facility, it's going to be cleaner.
The other facilities that you mentioned in the region, they're smaller than this facility, is that correct?
No, actually, Dart is larger than us. Pointy Hills MRF is larger than our facility, ours is going to be probably comparable. Santa Monica's large. I mean, you say we're going to go for 2,500 ton, it's not going to be 2,500 ton, there's not that much waste around here. But if you're permitting it, you want to go where the level that you can. But I think we're looking at probably 14, 1500 ton a day would probably be the maximum output or the input.
And I do want to acknowledge that on the tour, you offered to meet with us after if we had more questions or to stop by the facility.
Yes, anything.
So I'd be interested in more engagement about potential community outreach improvements, and perhaps more comprehensive planning to, again, just make the most of this relationship that we have between the city.
Absolutely. I mean, that's what we're here for, and we'll do that. That's part of our, it's our mode. And I'm available anytime, you know, it's 24/7, it's, Sundays you can come on down, it's fine. And then we have our tour of our e-waste facility, so we're, I mean, we're on the cutting edge. We've seen what needs to be done, and we grabbed it and run with it, versus kind of watch and see, and wonder what happened.
One more question that comes to mind is, Paramount doesn't have sort of a consumer recycling center. They have to drive out either to take what I think.
There's one right around the corner from us, DT Recycling on Garfield. I think that's the closest one.
Long Beach, isn't it?
Long Beach has some, and I think Bellflower has one on probably the other side of Alondra. The problem with that whole market, we lost, Planet Earth was operating, I think, about 800 facilities across United, or in California, they shut them all down, because they were not, the China Sward hit, and the state would not recover and pay them the money it cost to process material before they work on margins. So you, you have your redemption fee as a nickel a can, they sell it, and you have the scrap value. The scrap value may be another two and a half cents on top of that. So in order, in essence, they're getting seven and a half cents per aluminum can. Well, the market dropped, and now all they were left with was the five cents, and that wasn't enough to cover their overhead. And the state, I guess they've enacted some emergency measures right now in the Assembly and the Senate to go ahead and fast-forward and try to fix the problem, but the problem is, the train left the station, and they closed them down. So it doesn't have a place for the community to recycle the material, or very few of them. Because I think there's probably only maybe 400 left in the state, and they lost over two-thirds of them.
It's a shame, since.
Yeah, it is.
Makes it more difficult for people to recycle.
Yeah, well, and that's why it's important to have facilities like ours, so the materials are in the blue containers that we can process and then pull it out, at least it, you know, it doesn't go to the landfill. So they'll make some changes, but it's just kind of slow, slow to react.
Any other questions?
Thank you for answering those.
Really about Calmet is that they really, this is why the city is the way it is, clean. As somebody mentioned earlier, it is. And you have to educate your neighbors of everything that's going around in the alleys, whatever. If you educate your neighbors and say, "Calmet will do it in your trash day or the next day." They do. They come in and they do it. And I've seen it. I've reported quite a few couches and refrigerators all over the city. I have. And they come through. That's one of the.
Well, we offer the bulky, bulky on-call pickup through all the residents, basically once a week, 52 times a year. All they have to do is call us, and we're there the following pickup day. And then I run a designated truck three times through the city, and there's hotspots through the alleyways, and that's all they do. They do the route, and they spend, I think we do six, eight, that's about 24 hours a week, just picking up bulky items that are abandoned. And that's, that's not even the people that call, we just, you know where they're at, and that's where we go. So that's unfortunate that that happens, but as long as you take care of it before it festers, because if you go to the city of LA, just cross the LA River, and it is, it is bad. And so I think we pride ourselves on that.
Any other questions?
You had another question.
Yeah, I'll bring that gentleman up. Any more questions?
No.
Thank you, thank you for answering those.
Thank you very much for coming up.
Thank you.
Now, you wanted to come up, sir, you're welcome to come right back up.
Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, concerning the same issue is that for many years, I've been actually in here too, for 20 now already, in that city, and actually is what the things that I always expecting, that the city grew up and be okay. I don't have any actually issue that, you know, the system is there, and it's been providing assistance, but they pick up only twice a year, that's the only we have. But I have several actually incidents with them, that is, they actually come, a lot of rotter, bed, actually, bed animals that sometime come up and attack my dogs, because they're getting closer to actually to the facility, and they just go to the neighbors. I call Siaka, because I cannot kill those rotters, and it ever happened. I have to catch them. So this is a problem that is so close in there, plus also their odor, and then also the powder that actually come up all the time from the San, actually, Santana, actually, winds, that come up and covered up all my car. Well, those are items, I don't care. But I'm concerning actually my health and my kids, and so many other neighbors in there. In 2015, I brought up a lot of people in here concerning about that. It's just only I don't have any issue, but the only thing is, he cannot have 15 years old right now. Sooner or later, he has to retire. What about the next person? Is he going to keep up what he decided to do? Exactly the same problem? Who's going to guarantee us that it's not going to be issues, that not going to be actually problems? That's all what I am asking. Because I want to continue living in there.
We have city enforcement, sir. Now, if you have a real problem, you can always call City Hall. Granite Bill's not going to be there forever, he's a good man, and I agree with you. But if you have problems, you can always call City Hall, Code Enforcement, City, and they'll get right on it. If you have a real problem, then you can say, "This is coming from right here, and I know, and I'm standing here, and I see it." Then you can call Code Enforcement, and they will check into it for you. They'll get, that's what we have a city for, and for the, you know, for the residents, you know. I live here too, and I want Code Enforcement to be able to help us out, but that's what you're, you have that right to do that, you know.
They will check also for the bed odor?
That's AQMD, and you have a right to call them. But if you can prove that it's coming from across the street, or is it coming past their thing, is it coming from Compton? See, you're not sure. You might be blowing across Garfield, but you, you think it's coming maybe from the trash place, maybe it's not, but you have the right to call AQMD, and they'll send people out.
Don't forget that actually, we have some couple of accidents in here too, in Paramount, a couple of years ago with AQAD, that definitely the air was not cured, and there was problems actually near to the church, and people complained too.
Was that the, was that the trash facility, sir?
No, but it definitely, we have problems, so definitely, you know, my point of view is just to be more concerned that if we're going to just go and do this project, or give it the okay to extension the project. it the okay to extension the project for whatever time is, just be not forgetting the people that is living there. Because what actually I received on the answer on two thousand and fifteen is, "Do you know there was a heavy section to leave it over there, or what they called a heavy, um, industrial system when you bought your house?" "No, I didn't know. It's my fault, yes." But now, just because in there.
You're living there, I understand, yeah. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For your comment. Any other comments or suggestions? Anyone else like to speak on this item?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
The hearing, make a motion. We'll hear a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Do I hear a motion on conditional use permit number seven-two-one extension?
Make a motion, we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution PC two-zero-zero-one-six.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda. Number four, hmm, amendment to conditional use permit number four-five, four-four-five extension. We'll hear staff report, and this is also an open public hearing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll also be giving you this presentation. So this item is a request for a two-year extension for amended conditional use permit number four-forty-five for the Paramount Resource Recycling Facility located at seventy-two-thirty Pedersen Lane. The site is located in the heavy manufacturing zone. The amendment reduces the daily tonnage that Paramount Resource Recycling can process. Here's a look at the Paramount Resource Recycling Facility, outlined in red toward the bottom of the aerial. The facility is located on the south side of Pedersen Lane. The proposed Royal Recycling and Transfer Facility is located on the north side of Pedersen Lane. And some photos of the site. Conditional use permit number four-forty-five was approved in nineteen ninety-eight. It allowed the facility to increase the tonnage processed from one thousand two hundred tons per day to one thousand five hundred tons per day. The amendment reduces the tonnage processed to five hundred and seventy tons per day and restricts the type of waste that can be processed to construction debris, green waste, and self-hall waste. The remaining operations of the facility will move across the street to the Royal Recycling and Transfer Facility. These operations will include receiving, processing, and transferring of recyclables and municipal solid waste. When the Royal Recycling Facility opens, there will not be a need to process one thousand five hundred tons per day at Paramount Resource Recycling. The reduction to five hundred and seventy tons per day to process construction debris, green waste, and self-hall waste will be more than sufficient. And it's recommended that you adopt resolution number PC twenty-zero-one-five approving a two-year extension of amended conditional use permit number four-forty-five, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff? This is an open public hearing. Hear testimony in favor? Anyone opposed?
Make a motion to close public.
Well, you'd need to come up and state your opposition, sir.
Just wants to be heard.
Fine.
Same point that I just bringed up. It's my concerns about my life and it's concerns about actually the issues that this company can provoke more when they grow up more. And I know that concerning is big for my point, and it's not probably matter for you guys, because probably not leaving anyone you close to it, too close to it, but it's what I've been in actually in my twenty years. Yes, they have the right, but I pay for that trash. If it's not, they will not have any service from me. And also the city actually trying to improve that, uh, that we have to be obligated to pay to Car Mac forever. If it's not, and if we cancel our services, they go against to our homes. So is that fair? That is my issue. So just make sure that if they're going to expand it, and you guys are going to do it, actually checking up, make sure they don't forget it in ten years, don't forget it actually in fifteen, or when he retire, and something else come up and make a mess. That's it.
Anyone else want to speak against? We'll hear a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
We'll hear a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. We'll hear a motion on this.
I can add a comment here.
Here, go ahead.
So just to the gentlemen that just, thank you for being here, for expressing those objections. Um, I, I think some of you might be aware that in the South Bay, uh, I, either in Carson or in Wilmington, there was a recent incident, and the mayor of Carson is calling out AQMD for not doing a strong enough job to protect the residents there. So I do want to be very sensitive to those concerns. I think it's important for everybody to be reminded that we can't get too comfortable with whatever AQMD or even the EPA does when it comes to addressing environmental concerns. I think it's a good moment to, that you thankfully remind us of that there are still potential harms, and, um, I'm curious with your concern about odor, and I know I've visited the facility, uh, and Bill, um, talked about the technology there to trap the odors that are coming out of there. So I'd be curious to see if Bill would want to speak to that at all, um, in terms of their efforts to protect against odors, um, and perhaps some of your comments might do something to assuage his concerns.
Let's open public hearing again. Make a motion. Okay, well, I mean, as far as the odors, that's, that's the reason they're, they're installing the reverse, uh, air filtration system, which captured it. It's a, it's a degree of scrubbers. I think I mentioned you before, um, the CVT facility in Anaheim, right off to ninety-one and fifty-seven freeway, they have this monster air filter system, it's probably as large as this room, which is mounted to the side of the building, which is similar to what we're going to have, and, uh, you, you don't have any odor there whatsoever. And, and as far as inspection, George, uh, the LDA, Local Enforcement Agency, inspectors are there monthly, and, uh, along with Cal Recycles there, they're making sure your books and your records and everything is up to speed and where they, and where they have to be. We have the storm water. Uh, so what's going to happen now, once we start this facility, none of this water will be allowed to go to the storm drains anymore. It's all going to be in through filter systems, and it'll be percolated into the ground, um, where it's going to be pumped out and then processed. So that's a major, major expense, but that's something that we, uh, we're, and we're, we're going to do, that's, that we're committed to. So, uh, I mean, as far as the inspections and the flies and the odors, it's, uh, it's not going to be so much AQMD, uh, it's going to be the local enforcement agency that takes the lead action, and they're the ones that are going to dictate whether you, you are in compliance or you're not. And if you're not in compliance, it shuts you down. So we can't afford to have that happen, and it won't. And that's, that's why we're taking the, the measures, uh, the, to expand and modernize it as far as what we're going to do.
Bill, what specifically would you tell residents who are, who have these kind of concerns to do as next steps going forward?
Well, they, they can come, I mean, we can do some tours. I mean, they can, once we start construction, they're more than welcome to come on over and they can watch it. And once we're in operation, they can come on over. That's, that's, that's what we're here for. We're, we're, we're a public-private partnership, basically, is, is what it amounts to, and, uh, you know, we want to be good neighbors with everyone, and the same, same with them. Right, we'll, we'll address, uh, anybody's concerns, and I think we'll, we'll solve them. And this is for less tonnage now than what it was doing before?
That's correct.
And it's the green waste and wood waste and stuff like that? Right, we're going to keep that all separate. And then, and then we're going to have a large in the facility that is open to the public so that they can use, uh, uh, which would make it a lot easier for them and safer. Good.
And I remember that, I think it was two thousand and fifteen, when they toured the Santa Fe Plan, uh, the Planning Commission and our council people. I wasn't here, I missed that tour.
Mm-hmm. I, I did, and we took some city residents that were in the audience like tonight.
Like tonight.
And they were welcome to come, and they went on the bus with us when we went up the six-oh-five freeway and got off up there. Yeah, and they just modernized some of their equipment too. Just, uh, they just started operation just the last couple of months, so, um, yep.
Thanks for coming up, Bill.
You're welcome.
Thank you both.
Thank you for having and listening to me, and appreciate your vote, and, uh, and as I said, we're committed and appreciate your support of us and, and, uh, and our, our support to you too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I need a motion to close public hearing again.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Okay, now do I hear a motion on PC twenty-one-zero-one-five?
Make a motion, we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution PC two-zero-zero-one-five.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on, on the agenda is conditional use permit number eight-eight-six. We just received a note from the, uh, company that they would like to postpone this agenda, this item until next month, so I'm going to open this and postpone it till next month's meeting. Do I hear a motion to do that?
Make a motion to hold it until next minute.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, conditional use permit number eight-eight-four. Hear staff report.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, Assistant Planning Director John King will go over conditional use permit, permit number eight-eight-four, a request, a request to operate a restaurant with seating and a drive-through. He'll also handle Zone Variance number four-oh-eight, a request to allow an outdoor patio area in the front setback of the restaurant. He'll be doing these in a single presentation. Uh, the Planning Commission will have to open and close the public hearing for each item separately, and then vote on each item separately. John?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Hyde and, and commissioners. So as John mentioned, it'll be a kind of a two, two-for-one, could, that conditional use permit and the variance all, all together. And the applicant is Westland, um, Real Estate Group. They own the, um, the shopping center at the, basically the southeast of, um, Downey Avenue and Rosecrans Avenue. It, um, it's not exactly the corner, it wraps around the gas station and the Starbucks, but it's that, that bigger building. And you'll see the, the photos in a moment. So, here we go. Now, the CUP, that's for, um, the restaurant with indoor and outdoor seats and the vehicle drive-through, as John mentioned. And for the, um, a new building, um, one thousand seven hundred and one square foot restaurant pad building, that would go in the location of the, um, existing parking lot, um, basically to the west of the Baskin-Robbins, Little Caesar's area. So it's an open area, it's not even striped, so, um, you could say it's an underutilized parking lot. Um, so the, and the, secondly, the variance would be for the, the seating area, the applicant would like to have it closer to the, the sidewalk, right up to the sidewalk. So typically, typically there would be a, um, a landscaped area, so those, in this case, the, they would like the, they're applying to have the seating area right up to, um, kind of liven up the, the streetscape there. Um, and again, the DRB, the Development Review Board later this evening will, um, look at the specific design. Here's a photo, looking across, um, Downey Avenue, uh, into this, this portion of the kind of the L-shaped building and the, and then the property. Um, you'll see the, on the right, there's the Baskin-Robbins, and you kind of see the middle area, it's, it's unstriped, um, it's, you don't get many cars lingering there, and in, uh, typical hours of the day, there are, there are no, um, cars there, um, during most hours. The proposed area for this building would be to the left portion of, of this photo. Here's the site plan, uh, so Downey to Orient, the Downey Avenue is on the left side here, and it runs, uh, north and south, and Rosecrans is at the top, and, you know, that runs east and west. Um, kind of the, the grayed-off or browned-off, um, areas are the, not, not a part of this specific property, again, the, um, the car wash and the service station and, uh, the Starbucks. Although the, there is a joint parking agreement between the Starbucks property and this property owner, so there's kind of a, a shared parking, which allows for even, um, uh, more parking, parking opportunity, vehicular parking. Um, the existing building is in that pinkish color, kind of an L shape or J shape, and the, uh, new building is in the reddish color on, on the left, so you could see that's where it would go. Now you see, um, more striped parking, including, um, Americans with Disability Act, ADA compliant parking stalls, and a, um, actually there, uh, to the right of the proposed building, you'll see like a little red car represented there, just to the south of that or to the bottom below that, that would be, uh, an electric vehicle charging station. So, um, that'd be a nice feature for, to, you know, take Paramount into the, into the future. We're going to look for more, more charging stations. Um, there's a drive-through, um, right there where the arrow is, uh, the, um, it stacks about, um, anywhere between eight and ten cars, depending on the size of the car or the vehicle. Um, there's, um, there would be stamped and stained, uh, concrete treatments, uh, like where the, the, that little green car entering the drive-through is, and the exit, there would be a new drive-through exit, um, driveway. And this plan has been reviewed and is, um, given the, the okay by the Public Works Department and this, particularly the city engineer, um, for this extra, um, uh, change, configuration to the, to the driveway and the, and the property. Um, new trash enclosure at the bottom left corner, um, that would replace the, uh, smaller trash enclosure, um, near the, uh, where the drive-through is now. Here's where it will look, so you can see it's a, um, well, it's, it's a small restaurant slash coffee shop. Um, the proposed business has not actually signed, uh, the dotted lines, the contracts, but here's, for representation, here's a, a particular, um, coffee shop. Um, so you can see it's a very contemporary design, we'll get more into detail in the Development Review Board portion of the meeting. There's, we, and, well, do, do want to point out the, um, the, the outdoor patio area, which was right up to the, the sidewalk with the, um, powder coated, um, dark powder coated, uh, posting beams. The, um, applicant, they're proposing up to six employees per shift. The hours would be, uh, six AM to midnight, seven days a week, so plenty of time there to get, uh, products there. Um, thirty-three indoor seats and ten outdoor customer seats are, are proposed. Another photo showing more so where the, um, where the building would go.[1619.63] And a close-up of the restaurant, and the, so in the interior, kind of the left portion, you can see where the, how the seating lays out. The bluish color is more of the behind-the-scenes part of the restaurant and the business. On the left portion, you'll see the outdoor area, so there'd be kind of a nice treatment on the, on the surface, that's 10 seats. And again, that, right up, right up to the sidewalk, and as part of the, one of the recommended conditions is to include decorative safety system, like bollards, for example, or maybe some other type, to protect the patrons from, so there's no conflicts with any vehicles, you never know. In terms of the variance, so the state law and the municipal code identifies five findings that the approving body, that the Planning Commission, would have to look at and make sure that they all, you know, gonna check each of these boxes, you can see the checkmarks here. So going through each of them, exceptional circumstances. So first, a property has to possess, has to have exceptional circumstances, is the wording. So this is about a two-acre property, as you can see from the, I'll just go back to the shape, it's, it's an interesting shape, it's not a traditional rectangle, it's kind of an awkward J shape. It's atypical, and it's, and again, it has that underutilized parking lot to the west of the existing building, and the applicants, through the years, they've contemplated a number of schemes, and none of them really worked, so they've really got it down to as small as they can get for this type of business and to have a drive-through, so it's very exceptional. Second, and for variance, it cannot be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties in the area, so pointing out again, we are recommending a condition for you to look at, to require some type of decorative protective system, bollards, decorative bollard type. And just to point it out, while the, it would reduce the required 10 feet, the setback would be reduced down, it would be for the 31-foot length of the outdoor patio area, which is, that's 19% of the property line length of, on that side, on the Downey Avenue side, so it's not the entire portion, and the rest would be, still remained grassy and have that setback. Another finding, to provide a property right possessed by other property owners in the area, and there are in fact, you can go around Downey Avenue and Rosecrans, and you'll find some properties that are right up to the sidewalk. Last, must not adversely affect the general plan, so this is a commercial business, in a commercial zone, there's, it does not conflict with the plan, and in fact, you could say that it, there are some goals in the plan to invigorate the streetscape and be pedestrian-friendly and whatnot, so this definitely, this type of project closer to the sidewalk meets those goals. So, bottom line, sufficient parking would be required, this meets the requirements for this business and all the other businesses in the shopping center. We always do a parking analysis for these type of projects. There's sufficient drive-through queuing, it's actually more than the, you reviewed about this time of year, Starbucks on Alondra Boulevard, and this has, exceeds what Starbucks provides. There would be sustainability, Paramount has a lot of sustainability goals, we really want to build on those. So this proposal includes a number of bicycle racks and electric vehicle, and the electrical vehicle charging station to further those goals. And the variance findings look to be met. So with that, we think this is, would be a positive addition to Paramount, and we recommend two resolutions, one, Resolution PC 2013 to approve the CUP, and 20014 for the variance. And I believe the applicant is in the audience, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Can we go back to the trash picture, the big can that we had back there? Is that for all the buildings in the pink?
It is, it's, yes, so there's no ideal location for a trash enclosure, and this, and there's the balance between location and not having a trash enclosure right next to a business, so we thought it was the best plot.
In the corner, so now, how often is that trash picked up? Do you know the service? My concern is, is it gonna be, I don't, right across the street is the high school, and talking about a mess, I don't want that overfilling, or somebody else deciding, well, that's a nice place to dump stuff, as things happen in this city. So how often, do you know how often that's picked up?
I don't know, maybe the applicant might be able to provide that information, but as with other applications.
Because you're adding another facility that's going to be having more trash to fill in that bin.
That's correct, and what hap, in these situations, when there is an extra accumulation of trash, we, they have to, they have to have more pickups, so it could be up to every day.
Okay. I'm just curious, okay, that was my only concern. Any other questions from anybody else up here?
On the drive-through, coming out of the drive-through, they're going into Downey Avenue?
Going into drive, yes.
Right into Downey?
Yes.
Yes, before the gas station.
Really? First with the high school.
Yes, that's why we thought it was important for the city engineer to weigh in, and secondly, it was important, yes, and I like to go back, so if you look at the elevations, it's an open design, type of design, the post and beams, it's not enclosed, it's not a box, and it's a wire, decorative wire guard rail system, so we think that with that, it gives a lot more visibility than a typical, you know, closed outdoor area.
Right.
And what kind of restaurant is that going to be, again?
Well, for now, the application is for a restaurant, it really lends itself to be in a coffee shop, and the applicant is close to inking a deal with the, with a particular tenant.
Then it would come before us, again, before the tenant?
No, this, the CUP does, would cover the approval, this is what you're approving.
Okay, so my question is, if this facility with high school right across the street, and grammar school right down the street, beer and wine, I'm questioning those things.
If it's beer and wine, that would be a separate application.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure of, I don't, I'm not proving something in that close to with all those schools. Okay.
Especially in that area.
Okay. That's the only questions I had, anybody else have any questions to staff?
No questions for me.
This is an open public hearing, anyone in favor, please come up and state your name. The owners unavailable, please come up and state your name, sir.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, my name is Moses Huerta, I'm also one of the safety commissioners in the city, and I just want to address like, one of the concerns that Commissioner Sparza, pardon me, as far as safety and the traffic, I see the comparison, I just want to assure that we have with Tam's Restaurant that has a similar layout at Alondra and Downey, which has such congestion that caused issues with traffic and safety issues there, I just, I know that the traffic engineer, but I'm gonna see if there's more conversation, maybe feedback from city staff as far as the safety condition there. Since it is close proximity to the high school, we're, it seems like there's gonna be heavy, heavy traffic in that corner. And, you know, hopefully, if the business is successful, I mean, we definitely do want somebody to be successful in the area of being there, but I'd like to, safety is a big concern there. I'm walking in that area, I got feedback from residents, and in part also the parking committee that we have, so committee that had issues in that area nearby, so I just wanted, you know, bring that up in the forefront, maybe we can have that in the dialogue. But my primary concern was if it's comparable to that Tam's Restaurant, which has heavy, heavy traffic in the corner, so.
Yeah, painting the rear end, I agree with you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, the queuing for this is quite a bit larger than Tam's, and this is all onsite, too, it won't drag into the street.
Off Downey Avenue, then. My question, and also on the trash pickup, do you know what you're doing now? Because you're adding another facility, it's gonna probably add to that trash can.
He's not the owner, Mr. Chair.
He looks like the owner.
I know, look, sorry, no, no.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Moises.
Anybody else?
I just want to point out one thing, that the applicant is very close to having contracts signed with, completely signed, with a coffee operator, which compared to Tam's, I think the slowdown with Tam's, if we, you know, we've all been through there, it takes a lot of time to prepare food, and it's custom ordered, and with a coffee operation, it's a lot quicker, so I.
Is it Starbucks, just right around the corner from there?
It is, and the applicant sees that as a, as a healthy competition.
Oh, okay, I was just curious.
Good point, you could throw a rock and hit it, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I think there might be one more question.
Yes, come right up, sir.
You've been here all day.
Come state your name for us, please.
Could you turn the mic on? Thank you.
Perfect. My name's Nick Salito, I actually live on 8568 Century Boulevard, which is just north of Rosecrans on Downey, and I pass through this section every day, and I tend to get frustrated going up and down in this section, due to the fact that in the morning, there's traffic getting into Starbucks on Rosecrans, so there's cars hanging out in the street, which to me is a safety issue. If the only two other exits is on that Rosecrans, where that 98-cent store is right there on the corner, that's an issue, because if you have to go all the way from that side to the other side, or vice versa, and you're gonna put a drive-through coffee shop on the other corner next to the 76, you're gonna have a lot of traffic going up Downey. And when you get into, when you pass Downey and Rosecrans, on the left-hand side, there's a liquor store right off of, I just forgot the name of the street, but it's right, it's right after that little shopping center on the left, and there's a lot of cars that tend to stop right there as well, and have to turn into that street. So to me, I find that there's issues with this, especially for the fact that if this business hasn't signed a contract yet, it doesn't make sense to proceed with it if they haven't signed the contract. And also, if you have a Starbucks and another coffee shop, I mean, to me, it'd make more sense to have a different type of shop there to promote business and everything like that as well. But my major issue is just the safety and the traffic, in regards to that parking, especially because with the laundromat, the Baskin Robbins, and the Little Caesars, which I go to from time to time, it does get backed up with traffic in that little L section on the map. So, that, those are just my thoughts.
I appreciate your concerns, as a commissioner and as a resident of Paramount, we really can't tell the landlords who they can and not move into their properties, you know, sometimes we'd like to be able to, but that's their call, you know, they can put anything they want to in there. I do take your concerns, I know with the high school, a lot of drop-off is done up there, and there's a lot of pickup in the afternoon, so.
And you have the elementary school right behind it as well, too.
That's with some concerns, so, I appreciate your concerns, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other one, anybody else would like to speak, please come up and state your name, please?
This on?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Miguel Flores, and I represent Westland. I just want to make two brief comments, one is, I just literally got a message from my team that the contract is signed, so it's for a coffee shop. Number two, just something to point out, there is an existing barrier along Downey, across from the high school. So whether there's a coffee shop there or not, that's the whole point of that barrier, is to keep folks from crossing the street and that kind of thing. Besides the barrier, you know, we have our traditional crosswalks, so aside from that, that's, those are the two comments I wanted to make, so.
Now, do you, as the property, representing the property, do you know how often the trash is picked, I have a big concern about that.
That I don't, that I do not know, but that trash enclosure is being relocated to the south part of that property, just like John, yeah, you showed, and there's three bins in that, proposed in that new trash enclosure, so it's a three-bin capacity.
Is that going to be enough capacity for your L-square plus the restaurant, do you believe?
I believe it is, yes.
And do you, okay, you don't know what the pickup schedule is, then?
Pickup schedule, I do not know. No, I wish I could tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about the design? How, I'm curious if probably city staff knows the answer to this, how final is the design, just to echo the recent comments from a Moses Huerta resident about safety, the pedestrian experience in this area, is there any potentially flexible considerations being made about how to make that perhaps a slight bit safer, since it's so car-dominated?
Yeah, there's two, as it relates to patio specifically. Number one is the integration of bollards in, to the guardrail system. And what I mean by integration is to literally integrate it into the guardrail system, that way it's not this, you know, eyesore, in terms of, from a design perspective, and to add to that, we can't add anything on the sidewalk, that's a private, that's a public right-of-way, so again, the integration in the guardrail system, so that's that. Number two, we're proposing landscape on that driveway, that existing driveway, a landscape sort of barrier that's between, that'll separate the existing driveway to the patio and the main entry, with bike racks, like was mentioned, so.
Bicycle racks.
Yeah, and that's what we have to work with, it's a very tight site, if we had more space, we could do more, but I think, I think after a year of design sort of exercises, it's, we've gone to the point where it accommodates a lot of things, given the footprint of that building, and like I said, the, you know, the recommendation of the boller system is pretty easy to do, and adding landscape along the main sidewalk on the existing approach, vehicle approach, I think those two things will accommodate, you know, any safety concerns, in my opinion.
And a follow-up question, perhaps there isn't an answer to this yet, what is the Wi-Fi situation there, considering that there's a lot of students in the area that might be using this space, what is Wi-Fi like, electrical outlets, access? I know that some of the recent remodels by Starbucks in the area have gone away from providing electrical outlets to people who would normally do work there or study there, how does this business view that?
Be honest with you, I don't know, I know they have criteria, they have a prototype of not only what it looks like and how to operate on the, from a user standpoint, that I don't know, I don't know those details, as far as those accommodations, you know, obviously those things are in place to keep people there, and to keep people coming, and to be more of a sit-down situation and consume, rather than just in and out, that's my guess, but I don't know those details.
I think that's what happens when you have people coming in and using those type of electrical, you see, especially in a patio, and with all these students coming in, that's what happened to Starbucks, you know, that's why they had riots there, you know, they were worried about, and that's a good point that you made, so, you should look into that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of youth in the area who lack access to spaces where they can study, perhaps they live in a crowded home where they don't have that kind of, you know, ability to work, so, just a question.
Yeah, that's something, I guess we could address, we could address it to the tenant, but the contract is signed, and we have a year to get moving on it, and, you know, if you ask them, I'm just gonna, you know, not put words in their mouth, it's probably a benefit, to answer your question, whether kids have a place to go or not, that's just a place to go, I don't know, maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's a bad thing, I don't know.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, since you've had some issues regarding the trash over there, so, I'm not familiar with the enclosure that they're gonna build, but if it's large enough to accommodate three containers, which are normally three cubic yards, that should be ample for at least the square foot that I've seen on the footprint, but in other words, what we do, as far as our company, of course, I have our support staff, and I have a supervisor in the city all day long, each one of our drivers has a iPhone, and when they go to the job with the customer each day, if the containers are overloaded or what have you, there's any problems, they snap a picture of it, and it's emailed live time to our supervisor, our dispatcher, and our customer service, and we look at the pictures, and they make whatever calls that need to be, if it's trash on the ground, or overloaded, or whatever it may be, we contact the customer, and we remedy the problem right then and there.
Got it.
iPhone, this technology nowadays, it's awesome.
Wonderful, yeah, that's nice to hear, that happens.
And we have tags, we put tags on the bins so that the customers know, but we're proactive, and it's the little camera does a hundred words, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? Anyone opposed? Hear a motion to?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes, now remember, we have to do the two items on this, we have to approve.
Number six.
Number.
We did six.
13, PC 20013, and what else do we need to do on this, don't we have to have a something?
You're gonna be, you're gonna be, oh, the conditional use permit and the zone variance.
And the zone variance.
Right.
That's what I need to help on, so I need, do I hear a motion on those two items? What I have to do is that one at a time, okay, do I hear a motion on PC 0013?
Make a motion, we adopt Planning Commission Resolution 20, PC 20013.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes. Do I hear a motion on the variance for this conditional use permit?
Make a motion, we adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC 20014.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago. Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Zone Variance 408. Your staff report, open public hearing.
You.
And this is the one that we dabbled up on? So that's what I figured, so we've motioned on both of those, and we're good on this, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Next item on the agenda, number eight. Zone change number 233, this is an open public hearing, and we'll hear your staff report first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this item is a request to change the zone from light manufacturing to multiple-family residential for property located at 6429 and 6433, 72nd Street. Associate Planner Raina Shetzel will give you the details.
Thank you, Mr. Carver, and good evening, honorable chair members of the commission. As stated, this is a zone change request by the property owner to change these two addresses on 72nd Street from M1 to RM. And it's two separate properties between Hansaker Avenue and Ann Smith Avenue, and it basically implements the general plan designation property, or for the area from, or for multi, multiple-family residential. This is an aerial of the picture, Home Depot is to the top left, Hansaker Avenue runs north and south, Atlantic Place to the left also runs north and south, 72nd Street is on the bottom, and below or south of 72nd Street is the city of Long Beach, so it's on our border, Motts to the north. The property is circled on the bottom of, or north, on the north side of 72nd. The property is circled on the bottom of, or north, on the north side of Seventy-Second. Ann Smith again is to the right or east. These are the existing site conditions. The building you see J K Mart is sixty-four twenty-nine Seventy-Second Street. And the property owner has indicated that he's had problems making this a commercially viable market for the neighborhood over the past few years. And as well, it has an alcohol license that has been causing problems for the neighborhood and including the property owner. Property itself is about ten thousand square feet. The J K Mart is fourteen hundred square feet. There's a single-family residence to the east, which is sixty-four thirty-three Seventy-Second Street. And that's on the right behind the palm trees. It's a single-story, single-family home. And further right is a one-car garage, a hundred and fifty square foot garage. Here's some more pictures of the house and the garage to the east. And this is looking north. The, on the bottom is also the house and the garage. And the surrounding area you'll see is a mix of multifamily, multiple-family apartment complexes and single-family homes. So the top picture is looking east on Seventy-Second Street. Um, you'll see apartment complexes, two-story on the north side are in Paramount. And then on the south side is Long Beach, the city of Long Beach. And then the bottom picture is looking west on Seventy-Second Street towards Hunsacker Avenue. And the, the orange house on the south, if you will, is the city of Long Beach. This is the map of the existing zoning within the area. R two is medium density residential, kind of a mustard shade. And it's mostly single-family, or it's mostly residential zoning. You'll note that the property is the blue thumb in the neighborhood. It's the only remnant M one zoning. This is a proposed zoning. It will implement multiple-family residential as, to the east of the property in the city of Paramount. Existing land uses are a mix, again, of single-family, multiple-family, as well as the Home Depot commercial, which serves the neighborhood. And then this is the general plan of two thousand and seven, which this zone change will implement that, making the, a block, if you will, in Paramount, multiple-family residential, completing the general plan group policy requirements. As stated, this does implement the general plan land use designation of multiple-family residential. It won't be out of character with the surrounding zoning, all the homes that I showed you, and it integrates well with the neighborhood of varying densities. And the property owner has indicated that he would like to convert that mini-mart as soon as possible and potentially in the near future add maybe another home to the property, which will increase our housing numbers for, in Paramount. And finally, it's, it will prevent incompatible in industrial and commercial uses from locating in the neighborhood by changing the zone to residential. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC two thou, or twenty zero one two, recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance for zone change two thirty-three. Thank you.
Any questions, the staff? This is an open public hearing. Anyone in favor, please come up and state your name. Anyone opposed?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes. Any comments on this, from anybody up here? Looks like a good move on my part. I'm just curious to see when he comes back with plans and how much parking we're gonna get, but the street looked pretty busy already. But that's in the future. This is just changing a zone change, so gives him the opportunity to do it, so.
I did forget to add the property owners in the audience, so he heard that.
Well, when he comes forward with plans, then we can question him on that, so.
We will ensure it has adequate parking.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Okay. So do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution number PC two zero zero one two.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Hyde.
Yes. Oral reports and safety online request, online inspection request.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Building and Safety Manager Antilio Garcia will go over a new online feature that has just started in the city, and this allows inspection requests to be made online. Antilio.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. So for years, we have only accepted requests for inspections either by phone or in person. So I'm gonna walk you through a brief presentation on a new, our new online request for those who want to use their computer to request inspection for their construction work. So once the applicant goes onto the website, they would go down into the government and then from there to Building and Safety. Once you click on Building and Safety on the webpage, on the left-hand side, there is a Request tab for inspection online. Once we, once going to that page, it will send you to the inspection request portal. As you click on the portal, this is just a short video. The portal will send you to the, our search database. Once you get into the search database, you will go ahead and click there. At this point, you would have a search engine, which you would pick permit number, put in the permit number, which was on the permit you took out. And the search, this is just an example. So the, their permit would come up, you would see that it says Request for Inspection and access code that will be given to the applicant at the time they obtain their permit to access this function. So they would go ahead and plug in the code number that's given to them, who's making the request, their phone number, an email. Their phone number, so we can contact them if there's any issues. They could also select the date they would like to have the inspection. And a list of different inspections that are available for the construction. There's also comment section, which they can put in any comment they would like to add. They would submit that, and once they submit that, the page will give them a notice that the request has been submitted. At this point, they will receive a email from the system, basically advising them that their request was received. Also, staff will receive the same email, so we can go ahead and make the appointment or the request for the day that they requested, and our inspectors will go out there and perform the inspections. That is, you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
How often, say you went on that site and did it, can you request a inspection the next day or do, is there some time limit? I mean, there's only so many of you in this city to go out and do this.
Right, all inspections are one-day advance notice.
One day.
Right, and you have to call them before four o'clock.
Before four o'clock, and it states that on the?
It states that on the page, second page, correct.
Good deal.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda. Number ten, let's see, number eleven. Planning Commission comments? Anybody? Comments from the city attorney, commissioners, staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I've got two comments. First, there were no city council actions. The meeting for the council was postponed till next week because of the election last week. And my other two comments are, in January of 2020, Weber Metals announced that they would be laying off an estimated one hundred and fifty workers on March twenty-third as a result of uncertainty surrounding Boeing's troubled seven thirty-seven MAX program. A job fair for these workers is going to be held at the Clearwater Building on March twenty-sixth, and companies that manufacture components for the aerospace industry will be present at the job fair. And finally, on the dais in front of you is the Form seven hundred. This package contains instructions to fill out the form. The deadline to submit to the city clerk is April first, and there are also instructions on how to file electronically. And that concludes my comments.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since we're on Downey, we were on Downey Avenue and regarding the Gillum Market, where are we on that?
We're, we're.
The worst, that building is really.
Yeah. We're, we're very close to bringing a redesign back to you. I'm hoping to do that in April. So you'll, you'll see something in April.
In April.
I, I hope.
All right. Look this up. No, I don't.
Planning Commission meeting is now closed until the second Tuesday of next month.
The Paramount Development Review Board is called to order. Roll call, members, please.
Board Member Gillum.
Here.
Board Member Hyde.
Here.
Board Member Lopez.
Here.
Board Vice Chair Brago.
Here.
Board Chair Sparza.
Here.
Uh, you need a motion for the minutes, approval of minutes of February eleventh?
Take a motion to approve them.
Second.
Board Member Gillum.
Yes.
Board Member Hyde.
Yes.
Board Member Lopez.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Brago.
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Public comments, new business?
Uh, no public, uh, oh, I'm sorry. We do have a public comment from Andres Alcompo. Uh, it's regarding D R A twenty zero zero four. Uh, so you could come up during that item if you want to come up and make comments.
Item two is D R A number one five zero one 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 extension, a request by Calmet Services for a two-year extension to construct a thirty-nine thousand five hundred square-foot metal building and to remodel existing structures at one four zero zero one Garfield Avenue in the M two heavy manufacturing zone.
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll, I'll be giving you this presentation. So this item is a request for a two-year extension for Development Review Application fifteen zero one one. This is in connection with the conditional use permits that you considered previously during the Planning Commission meeting. And Development Review Application fifteen zero one one would allow for the construction of a thirty-nine thousand five hundred square-foot metal building and the remodel of existing structures at one four zero zero one Garfield Avenue. And the property is located in the heavy manufacturing zone. Here's a aerial of the subject property outlined in the gray, and you can see Garfield at the top of the slide, and that runs north and south. And some photos of the property. And here's a rendering of the entrance to the site. The project, again, includes the construction of a thirty-nine thousand five hundred square-foot metal building and the complete refurbishment of the existing structures. And this will include new metal panels where needed. Additionally, new roll-up doors will be installed throughout the existing structure. This is a look at the refurbished north side of the structure. And here's a site plan, and again, Garfield is at the right, running north and south, and Pederson's in the middle. And site improvements will include a new entrance and exit at the eastern end of the vacated Pederson Lane. There will also be new landscaping that will be installed throughout the site, and a concrete block wall will be constructed along Pederson Lane. And it's recommended that you approve a two-year extension for Development Review Application number fifteen zero one one, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
And I need a motion in order to, application number one five zero one one one.
Make a motion to approve.
Board Member Gillum.
Yes.
Board Member Hyde.
Yes.
Board Member Lopez.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Brago.
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Item three is D R A number two zero 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 three, and that's a request by Sarah Newman Westland Real Estate Group to construct a one thousand seven hundred and one square-foot restaurant pad building with an outdoor patio area at eighty-five twenty-eight dash forty-eight Rose Grant Avenue in the C three general commercial zone. Staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, this item is associated with the conditional use permit and zone variance that was heard earlier by the Planning Commission for the restaurant at Rose Grant and Downey. And John King will go over the design of the proposed restaurant, coffee house now that we know.
Thank you, John. And Board Chair Sparza and board members. Yep, this is three of three for this applicant, and now we know it's Jeremiah Coffee. To construct a one thousand seven hundred and one square-foot pad building with outdoor patio area, you, you approved the C U P and the variance earlier this evening as the Planning Commission. It's in the C three zone next to the twenty-seven thousand square-foot existing building. And there's a photo again, and it'll be on the left side there. Here's a site plan, and again, in red is the, the building up to the, up to the patio, the attached outdoor patio is four hundred and three square feet, and that's up to the sidewalk. And again, there's a drive-through. So a good combination to serve those who want to drive, walk up, bike, walk, or drive their electric vehicles. So it's, it's, it's a good cross-section, you can get your coffee. And here's again, the, the floor plan and the, the little patio area outside. And it looks really nice. You got the powder-coated, black powder-coated post and beam framed outdoor patio area with the decorative wire guardrails. There's some decorative wood cladding proposed for the, as accent material to the other areas are stucco. And there would be live plants installed on the east and south sides. And that would be either like a green screen trellis type with, with vines that you've seen in some other locations in Paramount, or it could be like a, more like a live succulent type of planting that we've seen in, we don't have in Paramount quite yet, but it could be the first for that. Metal shed awnings and drought-tolerant landscaping. You know, with our last few years, we've really pushed hard for, for nice landscaping, drought-tolerant landscaping, so the, it would be water-friendly. So it's the landscaping and it's the water use that, that really goes down and looks great. So with that, we think this is a good compliment and we recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Is the restroom ADA approved, uh, access? I couldn't see, you didn't state it, but I looked like it, I'm not sure.
Yes, it would be, it would have to be ADA compliant in terms of access, access to get in there and out and maneuver and the sink height and whatnot, yeah, and facilities.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, make a motion to somebody, review application number two zero 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 three.
Is there someone that's gonna speak on this item? Was this the item that they wanted to?
No, our next item.
Huh?
Next item.
Oh, next item, oh. I hear a motion, I make a motion to approve, uh, two zero 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 three.
I'll second it.
Board Member Gillum.
Yes.
Board Member Hyde.
Yes.
Board Member Lopez.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Brago.
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Item four is D R A number two zero 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 four, and that's a request by Chris Corporation, Carlton Forge Works, to demolish an existing building and construct a parking lot at one five one three five dash forty-seven Colorado Avenue in the M one light manufacturing zone. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, this item is a request to construct a parking lot to be utilized by Carlton Forge Works, and John King will present this item.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. And this is at Colorado, it's the northwest corner of Colorado and Adam Street. The applicant is Price Corporation, they're a contractor, and they represent Carlton Forge Works. And Carl, somebody from Carlton Forge Works, an employee of Carlton Forge Works is in the audience this evening. So the proposal would be to demolish an existing building. It's a deteriorate, very deteriorated building, used to be the old US pottery building, they made ceramics there years ago, and, and to construct a parking lot. There are two properties, one five one three five Colorado, one five one four seven, and the applicant, for this application, the applicant would merge them together formally, it would become one lot. It's all in the M one light manufacturing zone. And Carlton Forge Works, you know, they're one of our largest employers, and so in terms of employment and in size, they have about an eleven and a half acre campus. an 11 and a half acre campus. So this would be a 30,000-square-foot parking lot for employee use, and it would really help out the surrounding community there, because, you know, like everywhere else, it's, it's tough, parking can be challenging, so this would relieve street parking. Here's an aerial photo. So you'll see where the yellow highlights are, that's at the, again, northwest of Colorado and Adams, and the other Carlton Forge Works properties are in blue. And you can see that this yellow area is just to the east of an existing parking lot, so it's in, it's in an expansion of the parking lot, right off an alley. The applicant makes seamless string forging, they, it's a forging facility, they've been operating in Paramount since the 20s, and they have, at this point, they have about 300 employees. They have shifts throughout the day, so, but most, mostly during the day, when, this would really help, again, with, to relieve parking, non-street parking. Here's a view looking west at the, at the site, so, again, there's, there's two lots, one is basically where the building is, and one is to the, the north of it, and you could see some material that's being stored temporarily. So that would all go away, this wall would go down, you'd have landscaping, I'll always show you in a second. And here, here we go, here's the site plan, so there would be a total of 76 parking stalls, four stalls would be ADA compliant, Americans with Disabilities Act. There would be, in fact, six EV charging stations, or the capability to, for six vehicles to charge at once. And we've worked with the applicant to include some tree wells within the, the parking lot itself, to get more of a, of an orchard, kind of a canopy within there when the trees mature, lots of trees. Rod iron fencing, the applicant proposed a perimeter fencing basically around the outer property line. We're recommending a condition to recess that on, on at least three of the sides within the landscape area, so the public, there'd be more of a public benefit, the public can see the, the landscape would not be obscured by the fencing. And with that, we recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board, any questions for John?
No.
Questions?
I'm not clear on, is the parking for the public as well, or is it just for employees?
It's for the employees.
For the employees?
There, there was mention about this alleviating some of the surrounding parking concerns, so.
Yes, by the Carlton Forge Works employees not parking on the street, they'll park on onsite, then that frees up more parking for the other residential and business neighbors.
Any other question?
No.
Andres, did you want to say anything?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Go ahead and state your name.
My name is Andres El Campo. I work in facilities and maintenance at Carlton Forge, working there for almost 16 years, speaking in favor of the project. The, this project, we see it, with multiple benefits for the company and for the surrounding neighborhood. This building is outdated. We, we, we're not using the building currently, we're just using it for dry storage, we don't have any employees in there, we, we're really not happy with this building. We found the, the, it's a very old building, we found that the block walls were unfilled, center block with no rebar reinforcing, we don't, we don't want to use this building, we want to get rid of it. We talked about the parking difficulties, particularly in our first-to-second shift time change, it's like a half hour there where we don't have enough parking spots for all our employees. And then also, we're noticing more and more, employees are opting to use electric vehicles, so we think that this is something positive for the environment, we want to be supportive. We currently have five low-voltage electric vehicle charging stations, and these would be six, you know, dedicated, additional dedicated stations. We're proposing, you know, 30 kilowatt range for that. One suggestion I did have, item 23, talks about the ADA parking spots. If you show the site plan, you'll see that this parking lot is pretty far from our main offices. I would propose, if it's okay with the city, we'll restripe the parking lot that's closer to the office, so that the ADA stalls are more, you know, accessible to the main offices, if the city wants, but.
When is the demolition set to occur?
We, we, we don't have a permit yet, so we'd like to move quickly on it, maybe after, you know, after it rains, the rain stops. Yeah.
How many ADA did you want to put then, closer to the offices? How many spots?
We looked at the city ordinance, with the 74, I think it works out to four ADA parking spots, so we have, I forget the exact number.
But you have enough room there to put them closer to the office?
We, what I was thinking is to restripe the big parking lot that's closer to the main office, because if we put the ADA spots in this new parking lot.
There's still other ways to get to you.
Somebody would have to cross the alley, then cross 150-foot existing parking lot, then cross Vermont Ave, another 80 feet, so, just think it'd be nicer for anybody that would have to use those ADA spots.
I agree with you.
But, you know, we'll, we'll put them there if that's what the city wants.
So there will be no trucks parking in that parking lot?
I'm sorry?
There will be no trucks parking in there.
Yeah, the, the intent is for employee parking.
Employee parking.
Regular motor vehicles, yeah, no trucks.
Any other questions?
None. Any questions?
No. That'll do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Anybody else? Okay. Have a motion.
Make, make a motion to approve this with the change in the ADA parking to closer to the office, and eliminate them in the parking lot. So that's DRA Number 20004.
Mr. Chair, just on the handicap ADA parking, we, we do need to clear that through Building and Safety first, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, we'll hold off then. Do you want to hold off on this until?
No, no, you can vote.
You can go ahead.
Let's approve it's subject to?
Subject to the changes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Public safety.
Okay. I make a motion, subject to the changes for the ADA spots, approve Development Review Application Number 20004.
Okay. Just a second.
Board Member Gillum.
Yes.
Board Member Hyde.
Yes.
Board Member Lopez.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Brago.
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Any comments? Number five, board members, staff?
No comments.
Okay, the Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned till April 14, 2020.
You got your own what?
Yeah, I was waiting for him to do it, too. The regular meeting of the Economic Development Board is called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Sparza.
Here.
Board Member Gillum.
Here.
Board Member Hyde.
Here.
Board Vice Chair Brago.
Here.
Board Chair Lopez.
Here. The first item is the approval of minutes for the month of February. May I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve February 11.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. May I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Sparza.
Yes.
Board Member Gillum.
Yes.
Board Member Hyde.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Brago.
Yes.
Board Chair Lopez.
Yes. Are there any announcements, comments, or questions from the audience not pertaining to the items on the agenda?
No speaker cards.
No speaker cards. So item number two is the Assistant Director's Monthly Report. Staff, please.
Yes, John King, I'll give you a presentation on the General Plan Annual Report, Economic Development Element.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Board Chair Lopez and board members. We're just going to keep this one, one short, it's been a long evening overall, so, just a quick oral report, and this is actually just a sneak preview of what the City Council will be reviewing next Tuesday. Every year, by state law, each jurisdiction, be it a city, be it a county, or be it San Francisco, city and county, they, we have to do a review of the general plan, that jurisdiction's general plan. So as you, as mentioned earlier this evening, the current general plan was updated, last updated in 2007. By April 1st of every year, the City Council reviews a, the progress of the implementation of the general plan. So the general plan, as you know, consists of a number of elements, such as land use and public safety, resource management, and economic development. So just, just to give you just one glimpse of, of our update, the city in 2019, and looking ahead to, to this year, we've continued with our program, economic, the Economic Development Team, which is now with our Administrative Services Division, and you, you know, Daniel, that was our R S, was, was here earlier this evening, they've been meeting, they continue to meet with developers, they attend brokers' conferences, there's a, there's a larger conference in San Diego every year called the ICSC, for, for the shopping centers, making connections and furthering the goals of the City of Paramount for, in the area of attracting businesses. And there's also, now, there's attracting businesses and retaining businesses, and there's also the workforce, so Paramount also continues to make progress with our workforce development. We have a, you know, we have partnerships with the, the school district and some other nonprofits, and we'll continue to do so and continue strengthening those relationships. And we appreciate your support, and that concludes my presentation.
Item three, any comments from board or staff?
I'm, I'm going to be on vacation next month in April, so we're going to go visit my wife's family member, or her parents, excuse me, my wife's parents. So I will miss the next meeting at April 14.
Where exactly are you going?
Aguascalientes, Hot Water.
That's my town.
Ernie's Town.
Really? Oh, nice. All right, I'll say hi to your family out there.
That's where his grandfather.
That's all.
Any other comments? Since there's no further business, the meeting of March 2020 is adjourned to the next regular meeting of the Economic Development Board on the second Tuesday of April at 6:00 PM.
Hey. They're done.